Good morning, everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised our city council meetings are being broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order in the absence of our city clerk, our city attorney. Lee Roberts will serve as clerk of this session. The chair will call on Lee Roberts for the roll call.
Council President, Dr. Cynthia Toles.
Here.
Councilman Kent Back.
Here.
Councilman Johnny Cannon is absent today. Councilman Ben Reed.
Here.
Councilman David Williams.
Here.
Councilman Jason Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Thomas Worthy.
Here.
We have a quorum, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Kent Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for the ability to come and to the City Hall to do the city business. Father, we'd ask for prayers for those that have been affected by recent storms and those that are still without power and those that have had damage. We just ask God that you will help those as you see fit. Father, we ask also that all we do today will bring glory to your name. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'll call on our EMA Director, our representative, to give us an update.
I'm Brianna Cole with the EMA. Just an update on some of the numbers. As of this morning at 10:00 a.m., we have 4,578 total cases. That's cumulative for the county. 538 of those were in the last 14 days. We have currently 54 deaths. That's 52 confirmed and two probable. Statewide, we've got around 81,000 presumed recoveries. And to date, it's also cumulative, 20,000 hospitalizations statewide. Currently, the total number of tested in Edgewall County is at 31,640. Something that I do want to bring to everyone's attention, in October alone, the percent positive, so the percentage of people who have tested positive, has gone up from 7.2 to 9.6 percent. And that's just in the month of October alone. So it's been on a steady increase. And that is, the last update on that was October the 24th, but we expect that to continue to increase. As far as the age groups, I know we've shared that with you guys each week. We still have, 38 percent of positive cases are coming from the 25 to 39 age group, and they are only accounting for 4.7 percent of the deaths. And this, of course, is statewide. The over 65 age group is only 16.78 percentage of positive cases, but they are accounting for 76.9 percent of deaths in the state. The indicator dashboard has not been updated since October the 30th, so we're waiting on that next update. It's lagging behind a little bit. And recently, they've added a, it's the Alabama K-12 COVID-19 School Dashboard. So this enables you to follow a link on ADPH's website. It's a total of three dashboards that we're looking at now. So we've got the original COVID-19 dashboard, we've got the risk indicator dashboard, and now we have this K-12 school dashboard. And it allows you to go through each school system in the state and see the number of cases that they've reported. So for Edgewall County, and this, I want to let you guys know, this is the week of October the 30th, so it's not been updated yet for this week. But for Edgewall County School System, that's 22 cases. For the Gaston City School System, it says less than five, and then a tally is unreported for that week. We are still giving supplies to first responders and volunteer agencies like that, masks, cleaning supplies, anything like that that they may need. So we're encouraging citizens, you know, if you can't find them, if you can't find masks and gloves and that sort of thing in stores, maybe hit up one of the volunteer organizations. If you're still having trouble with that, we'll be able to get you in touch with a volunteer agency that might be able to help you with that. Any questions?
I have one question, and I'm not sure if you can answer right off the cuff, but I caught the tail end of a report this morning on NBC 13 News that listed Edgewall County as second in the state for, is it active cases at the moment?
I'm not sure. I can get that answer for you, though, and let you know.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I don't want to misquote the information, but it was, Edgewall County was either in the second in the states in number of active cases, or there was another figure, I'm not sure exactly what it was.
Okay.
But if you could research that.
Absolutely. I'll get that to you guys today. Thank you.
Something, and you can elaborate on it if I miss, if I hit just that too high of vantage point with this, but I heard yesterday that the CDC's guidelines as it relates to direct exposure have recently changed. Not sure if you guys were aware, but instead of 15, their definition of direct exposure, instead of 15 continuous minutes or consecutive minutes, it's now 15 cumulative minutes over a 24-hour period, which, from a contact tracing standpoint, improves, obviously, the ability to trace, but it makes the life of a city or an employer or anybody that's trying to determine who's been exposed that much more difficult. But, so to boil that all down, instead of 15 continuous minutes, it's now 15 cumulative minutes over a 24-hour period. So that just made our life a little bit more difficult, I think.
Right. And I would suggest for everyone to go to the CDC's website and check for updates very frequently. As you all know, this is unprecedented. This is a new virus that we've not dealt with in the past. So updates come frequently, and new studies are done every day, and they're finding out more and more about this. So I really want to encourage everyone to get the latest information for yourself from the CDC and those trusted health agencies.
Thank you. We appreciate what your agency does for us and for our city.
Thank you.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held on October the 27th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt the minutes.
Very good, Lee.
He thinks he's in court, don't he?
Me, too. I got to get used to the boys. The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 23rd through the 29th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payments of accounts.
Any proclamation? Unfinished business. We have two items. We have a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1137 Brentwood Drive in District 3. The resolution was tabled for 30 days on September the 29th. What is the pleasure of the council?
They haven't done anything to the property?
You've got your memo. Move to abate.
Just got it.
Tabled 30 days.
It was tabled for 30 days, and now it's back. Oh, we're going to table it again.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I make a motion that we table this.
Hey, hey, that's my district. I do. Move to abate. Move to abate.
Yeah, well, we need some, we need some excitement. Councilman Worthy always gives us excitement.
Well, I try not to, if y'all act right.
Make Tyrone happy over there, man.
I move to adopt.
No, you may. Read the memo.
Okay, okay, I was looking at the wrong one. Tabled 30 days.
Second.
Clerk? Clerk, we don't have any discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
My bad.
We have a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2441 Fairview Road in District 7, and this resolution was tabled for 14 days on October the 20th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Since the owner has promised to bring it up, and he's in the process of right now doing it, I'm going to ask for a 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next item, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition in favor of a resolution abating of a nuisance on property located at 1312 Ewing Avenue in District 3. This is Larry Pankie, I believe, and Dorothy Pankie, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Larry Pankie.
Okay, if you give your, if you give your name and address, please.
Larry Pankie, 1312 Ewing Avenue. That's what the house is about, some 1312 Ewing Avenue.
But is that your current address?
Do what, son?
Your current address.
Is Councilman, not son.
Okay, Councilman. All right, no, my current address is 425 Ewing.
Okay, thank you.
It's a little apartment.
I was waiting to pass it down. Councilman Back.
I had my eyes in the back of my head closed, and I couldn't.
Okay, sir. If you address us, sir.
Okay, I have a, had a list, I received a list of the things that I needed to do to a piece of property that I have. I have some pictures, if anyone wants to look at them. And most of the things that needed to be done with it was windows, all the windows have been fixed, and something under it, sorry, there you go. All of them has been fixed. And around some of the windows, I still have to put a little trim up, but all the windows on the front of the house has been replaced. And two on the, if you're standing in front of the house, be the right side, those are replaced. I put in one, two, three, four, five, six new doors on it, and among other things, and some of the windows still need trim put around it because I was still working on it yesterday. But some of the trim around some of the windows, not all of them, but some of them, still needs to be put up. That will be taken care of this following week. There was, on the garage there, I had a big, huge tree sitting out there. It had come a storm, it fell, a little piece of limb hit the very eve of the building, and when it hit it, it broke it. And I have a guy coming next week, and he will also fix that. You can tell that it's very tall, and I'm fixing to be 74, and I don't want to be climbing a ladder at that height. But it will be fixed next week. There's probably some few other things in there that I have fixed at the present time. I can't remember what they are. The rail around the shop, I put, all of that is new, it's been put up. And up on the, as you come out the back door, right at the side of the house, at the end of it, I put up a rail with all the battens and everything in it, and that's finished, it's done. Now, on my garage, or it's not a garage, it's a shop, on the shop, as you standing in front of it, I have a little side door on the side that was replaced, but some people broke into it, messed the door up, and I did call the police, there was a report made of it, and I don't, I've made several reports over a period of time. But I'm willing to do whatever else you can find, whatever you want me to do. Now, the door on the front porch, it needs painting. There's nothing wrong with it, just needs painting. And this is not on the list, it's never been mentioned to me, but I have decided on my own that I want to take the flooring on the porch up, and I'm in the process of working on it now. Taking that floor up, and I'm putting a new floor down. I've already bought the plywood and everything to go ahead and place it down, and I want it, I want it back, I want it right. The steps, as you stand beside the house, those cement steps you see there, I've had those put in, had a rail put up on the side. I've owned this house for 47 years, and I don't want it to be tore down. If y'all see anything else that needs to be done, if you will notify me, I guarantee y'all fix it. And I don't want any problems from the city. I think y'all do a fantastic job in keeping things the way they need to be. And there was some shrub that had grown up around the house. That was neglected for a while, but it is under control now. It's all been taken down, it's all been put on the street and such as that. Now, out behind my shop, there were multitudes of little trees yea-bear around and such as that. Back during the summer, I had all of those cut down, every one of them. And then I had guys come in there and cut all the bushes and such as that out and everything, but it had grown back up, and we're taking care of that now. We're working on it at the present time. But if y'all can just bear me a little more time, give me an extra month or so, or whatever you can do, the rest of it will be done.
Mr. Pankie, you know, again, this is not my district, but what I will say to you is that there are a couple of things you really have to be mindful of from our perspective. Yesterday was the third anniversary of this case, so that's three years. And so, you know, if you could offer up, and I'm not sure how much conversation you've had with the building department, but if you could offer up some level of assurance that being granted another 30 days is going to make a significant difference, that would be helpful, because I think, you know, again, from the council representative's perspective, this is a three-year-old case, and I'm not sure. It sounds like you're doing a lot, and you have a good grasp of what the issues are, but again, they have to have some assurance that progress is being made as far as, as far as some of those issues being brought up the code. And I hope that makes sense. I hope that makes sense. You know, nobody, that's a nice home. I mean, you know, it's obvious you've been cutting the grass and doing some of the landscaping around it, but the home itself appears to have some opportunities. So I think that's why you're here today. So if you can offer up some assurances to your council representative, I think that might be, that may go a long way.
Does anyone live in the house?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. There was people living in it, and they moved. And I did have an individual that was wanting to move back in it. I had put up two new windows on the side, and I wouldn't let him go in it because I knew that he did drugs, and he took a big rock and threw it through one of my windows and was gone. There's nothing that I could do about it. I have replaced it. And I'm not sure of what kind of assurance that you would like to know that I will finish this house, but I promise you I will, and I'll do whatever y'all say to do.
Yeah, things we've accepted in the past, and this is not just for you, this is for anybody listening, things that we've accepted in the past is if you've got a contractor that you've retained that's already been paid a retainer or signed an agreement to actually complete a project, being able to show the building department that project and show that there's somebody lined up to take care of it, that goes a long way.
Well, most of that stuff I'm doing myself, and my son and my grandson, right here, has been helping me. And I've been building for 25, 30 years, and I do most of it myself, but I get certain things that is too tall for me now, that I just don't want to go up those ladders anymore, and I have to get other people to come in and do it. And as far as some of the brush that was concerned, that I was concerned with as well as y'all, I was having a hard time finding anybody that wanted to come up there and spray it. They kept talking to me about the virus. I said, "I don't see what the virus has got to do with spraying this brush." I said, "I got to get it done." But, you know, that was just some of the issues that I've had with it. But as in reference to, will I do it? Yes, indeed, I will, and I promise you that.
Okay.
I just need some, I need some more time, and I don't know what else needs to be done. I've done everything that's on the list, and if you'll make me another list, I'll try to abide by it.
Just get with Mr. Harbison after this meeting.
Let Mr. Harbison speak.
And then we're going to let him speak. But get with him. That's Mr. Harbison right there, if you don't know. He can tell you what you need to do.
Yeah, if I could sum up Mr. Pankie's plea, I believe he just asking for a little more time, and we're certainly not opposed to that. I had a discussion with him prior to the meeting this morning. He has done, I would say, probably over 90 percent of everything we've asked for him to do, and I would not be opposed to this case being tabled for 30 days, Councilman Worthy, and give me the opportunity to go and verify the work. As you can tell, my pictures were taken six days ago, his were taken yesterday, so some work has been done, and we're certainly not opposed to him being given some additional time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
I would like to table it for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of tabling the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion to table for 30 days is carried to adopt.
All right, Mr. Pankie, you have 30 days.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it, and I appreciate every one of you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1307 Malone Street in District 3. Nathaniel King, possed for right of redemption of Leon Tremel Jr. and Dion K. Tremel being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? All right, if you give your name and address, please.
My name is Nathaniel King. 1120 Wells Avenue is my living address there in Gaston. I came in church with Dion, and Dion said she didn't want the house whatsoever, so her nephew said he would like to buy it back, so I started working on the house for a length of time. So now, he never did get back with me whatsoever. I gave him a list of what I had done to the house, but the back part of the house, I never did get a chance to do nothing, because I didn't even want to run the tail above on it. So I held the vinyl sliding in the windows to put in. So I just asked a little bit more time to work on that part right there, to get it knocked out.
So do you own this house?
I bought it from the state of Alabama.
Oh, you bought it?
From the state.
In a state sale, okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But it's like a three-year right of redemption. So now they're saying they want, I spoke with them before the meeting, saying that they want to get it back. So he's like in a hard spot, whether to continue fixing it or not.
Yeah. So I would continue to fix the back part of the house up, and just add it on to the bill if they redeem it back then, so as you will see.
Yeah, all I would encourage you to do is keep good records, because
Absolutely.
That'll be the only way you can get your money back.
Yeah, that's what I have suggested to do. So I'm just asking for a little bit more time to work on the house in the back.
Let me ask the question. I know he bought this in a, like, what, a tax sale?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but if, and I know that when they do the redemption back, he can get the tax money back, but what about the money that he's used to?
Yes. Yeah, the state, the lady, Linda, at the tax place, she said, "Just keep all of my receipts that I put into the house."
Attorney Williams was right. You get reimbursed for your actual improvements that you made, so keep up with your time and all of your material list.
And she said, "Just buy it by the city, what you live in, just do what they say if they condemn the house."
Did you hear what he said at the end?
Yeah.
Plus 12 percent?
12 percent, oh.
Okay.
I had a number sentence.
That's good information.
All right. All right, thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Harbison, please.
I talked with Nathaniel before the meeting. I've actually worked with him on several other cases where he's bought property from the state. This property actually involves two structures. One is a house listed as 1307. The pictures that I presented you this morning were of a garage apartment behind the house, and that's what we were talking about. He has the material, and I'm certainly not opposed to giving him the opportunity. The house looks great, and if he would be willing to make the garage apartment look as well as the house, we certainly would not be opposed to that. It would be a great asset to the community. So I'm not opposed to giving at least 30 days for him to continue to work on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to give him 30 more days, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of tabling the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1327 Hill Avenue in District 3, state of Alabama being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak, speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a vacant lot, which is owned currently by the state of Alabama. We have one of the local residents there in that community that's been using this property to park their, what we deem to be abandoned vehicles there for a number of years. You can tell in the pictures, there's probably over a dozen vehicles and trailers. We're asking today for a resolution so we can go on to this property and remove those vehicles. Thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution to abate a nuisance of an accessory building on property located at 12 Mitchell Street in District 6, Kenneth Allen and Betty Allen being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, this Madam President, this case involves a couple of accessory buildings. There was a house removed there years ago. For whatever reason, the accessory building remained. We filed the case in October of 2019. Been no improvements to that. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to a date.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Excuse me, who did the second? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 310 Wilson Street in District 6, Jeffrey Edmondson being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned house. We filed the case in February of this year. There've been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 303 Miller Street in District 6, and this is Betty Joyce Gregory being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in August of 2019. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to a date.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving and issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Jason, Councilman Wilson, would you pronounce that whole name for me, please?
Yeah. Omar's LLC doing business as Tut Hooka Lounge. And to be clear, this is an existing business entity that already has a beer and wine license and they are adding a spirits license so they can offer mixed drinks and whatnot.
Okay, have applied for a lounge retail liquor license, class one, at 630 Broad Street in District 5. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Was that Councilman Worthy second?
You hit me up, Councilman Williams, either one.
Well, I've got to make proper notes here for Iowa. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving and issuance of an alcoholic beverage license at Hoojung Food Group, Save-A-Lot 163 has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only at 301 B, North 12th Street in District 3. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, since it's in District 3.
Nevertheless, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution on warning of bid number 3444 for a gymnasium floor replacement at Raymond Hill Community Center. The city engineer has recommended a warning of bid to HUDA Construction Company and the amount is $146,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Who seconded that?
I haven't done one yet, go ahead.
We'll put you down.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing amendment to the commercial development incentive policy. And this amends the policy to provide for interior capital improvement on a case-by-case basis with the council approval. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing a special use permit to T-Mobile. And this is for the modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility that's located at 128 Ewing Avenue. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Worthy, Councilman Worthy, Councilman Wilson.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing a special use permit to AT&amp;T. This is for the modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility that's located at 1212 Scenic Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. If you all go a little slow for the clerk, please.
So, so move.
Wilson, seconds. Williams, Wilson.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the first reading. This is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget. And this is to reflect receipt of a Bureau of Justice Assistant Bulletproof Business Partnership grant in the amount of $40,950. And this ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business?
Yes.
New business?
I thought Ben was going to go with that one, but I'll do. Yes, Madam President, I have won a resolution authorizing a co-application for Economic Development Administration grant to fund a sanitary sewer improvement project. We're co-signing on this grant request with the Gas and Water Works and Sewer Board who oversee the project. Ask for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of considering the resolution as an item under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous consent has been given to consider the item under new business.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Ask, ask for unanimous consent for Resolution 543 authorizing public hearing or proposed economic development agreement with De La Sandro Enterprises LLC and Fourth Avenue Super Marty, Inc.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor considering the resolution as an item under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous consent has been given to consider this item under new business.
Ooh, I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. On behalf of Johnny Cannon and myself, I want to thank Lisa Osborne and the Commercial Development, the mayor's office, because I know what hand they had in it, and the people of Alabama City. I know Johnny and some of us have worked tirelessly to get this. Lisa went out and got it with the help from the mayor's office. But anyway, thanks to everybody, we need that grocery store. And that's a reality and we certainly want to know that we appreciate it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you.
Do we have any department reports, boards? We have announcements or comments by the mayor's council? Start with you, Councilman Reed. Haven't started with you in a long time.
Hey, how about that?
I go crisscross.
No. I just reiterate how much we appreciate the hard work in bringing that grocery store here. Somebody I left out was the owner of the shopping center. He, he did a fabulous job before and this time it's going to stick and I just appreciate him very much. And be sure and go vote today, everybody. It's your opportunity, once in a lifetime. Thank you.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. Just Nathaniel King left before I had a chance to say thank you. You know, for every Tuesday, we, we vote to abate property nuisances and I haven't met him before, but it sounds like he has a, a program where he goes in and, and rehab's houses and uses money from the state and a smart guy. So I just want to thank Nathaniel for what he's doing. You know, every time we tear down a house, I think it kind of tears down that neighborhood. So he's trying to work in the other direction. And also, it sounds like Mr. Panky that was here today, he and his son are working and they've invested money into that property on Ewing Avenue. So we had two today that deserve a, a thanks, that are, are doing, doing a nice job. On a, on a lighter note, I have locked myself out of my Facebook account. And in the scheme of things, this isn't a big deal, but I get, I do a lot of city, I get a lot of requests on private messenger, on Facebook and things like that. So if any of you, for the last, oh, seven to 10 days have tried to reach me on Facebook, I'm, I'm still alive, hadn't died, I'm, and I'm not ignoring you, I just can't see what you're, what you're requesting. I'm looking for an eight or nine-year-old child that can help me get back into that. And so I'm, but with the COVID, it's just hard to make that connection. So bear with me as I navigate these social media waters. I hope to be back in touch with the world soon. Thank you, Madam President.
I'm sure you've been able to sleep a lot better.
You know, it has been kind of nice, to tell you the truth. If I could just lose my TV remote, I think I'd be in great shape, probably.
I could have told you last week when you told that joke. Tyrone did it.
Yeah.
Bet on it.
Oh, no.
Tyrone.
Councilman Worthy?
I just want to just say, go vote. Today is voting day. Please go out and vote if you haven't already voted. Thank you to Lisa for all the work that she does. And that grocery stores will be definitely needed over there in Alabama City. Oh, yeah, and I have this little note on my agenda here and I will work on that. Mr. Clerk, that's an inside joke.
Councilman Williams, and I had instructed him that since he was in Councilman Cannon's seat, he had to provide us with some jokes. Councilman Williams.
Not going to happen.
Thank you.
So I do like the view of the, of the council chambers better from that side, so I will not be sitting over here again. I prefer the view from that side, for sure. I do, I want to reiterate the, the point that was made about voting. Go out and vote, please. Go out and vote for, you know, if there are a lot of people that are fought and died for us to have that right, for everybody that was asked to tell how many bubbles in a bar of soap, for everybody that was asked to count the number of jelly beans in a jar, for everybody that was exposed to a poll tax. Go out and vote. That was exposed to a literacy test of some kind. Go out and vote. There's a reason why people don't want you to vote. Because it's an important right, it's a meaningful right. So we're, we're again encouraging everybody to go out and vote. Go out and vote and exercise that right. Thank you to those who have voted absentee in the state of Alabama already. Thanks for the folks that have tirelessly, tirelessly taken the calls. I know everybody up here has taken phone calls from elderly people and people, and people that aren't elderly, to be quite honest, who just didn't understand the process and wanted to know. I think everybody up here has taken the time to say, hey, here's how it works. So thank you for, for all the educational points and everything we've done to help people to exercise, exercise their right to vote. Lastly, the, you know, I just thought this was interesting to share in light of what we shared about the coronavirus earlier and that, and the pandemic update. She mentioned that there were over 20,000 hospitalizations noted in Alabama as of this morning. I referenced a, an article back in March of 2020. I think the number of available hospital beds in Alabama at that time was 14,790. So you may be asking, wait a minute, 14,790 and 20,000, there's like a 6,000-bed spread there that we're not accounting for. Well, what's happened over that period is space and rooms and buildings have been repurposed for the purpose of coronavirus patients. If that doesn't ring a bell with you, I don't know that we can get your attention with this pandemic. It's serious. We've had to repurpose beds to account for the volume. Folks, take it seriously. Take it seriously and do your part. And the only other thing I have to offer is, Mr. Roberts, as, as much as you tried today, you, sir, are no Ava Nelson.
Absolutely.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Council, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have much to add, obviously. I'll, everybody knows we should go vote, but my biggest thing is regardless of what happens today, y'all just act right, please. Love your neighbor. This is a season and I know there's a lot of emotions about it. I'm, I'm less worried about, I know that there's great voter turnout and everybody's going to go out there and exercise their right to vote, but no matter what happens, just, y'all, please keep your composure, man. I'm, I'm just tired. I'm tired of it. It, it's just so much easier when we all get along with each other. So here's to getting past this and moving on. That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, Mayor?
Lisa for her work on the grocery store, it's going to be a great thing for this area. And also, we have two guys who haven't seen in a while, Mayor Portz and Mr. Curly. We're glad to have you all back. Hope you're doing good. Anyway, that's all I got, I guess.
The mayor just stole, stole my thunder.
That's what I did. I'm sorry.
That's fine. We're just glad to have you all back and up. But there's Mr. Studdeman. Mr. Studdeman is my standby in, in the community and he's the one who Mr. Studdeman is my standby in the community, and he's the one who oversees Hugley Park. So we appreciate what you do for the city. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right.